Good evening. I'd like to call the August 19th regular scheduled meeting of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to order. And I'll ask Commissioner Edwards if he would have our implication and Commissioner Cooper will follow with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for another great day. We thank you for all the people represented here. We thank you for all the families represented here. We ask that you bless us and guide us through the evening, take us all home safely. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Before we adopt the agenda, we have been asked to amend the agenda for our Safety and Risk Manager, Ms. Pamela Maxwell, by removing item number 15 because they did not provide us a current price for this meeting. They will submit a new agenda item request at a later time. So we are being asked to remove agenda item number 15 from this particular meeting's agenda. And with that, I ask for a motion to amend tonight's agenda with the recommended recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I now have a motion to accept tonight's agenda with the recommended changes?
Okay, do we have a motion? Okay, a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Yes ma'am. The next item on the agenda is item number five. This is for citizen comments. Agenda topics only at this time. We are asking any citizens that have any comments that is regarding the agenda at hand, they may come forward at this time. Each person is allotted three minutes, and when your time has concluded, we will call for the next person. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone and provide your name and address, please.
Good evening, Board. Elena Sanders, sorry. I actually sent an email to the Board specifying what's... It was sent to the Intron County Manager and District Three, but I include the Board on it. I was hoping to get my questions answered or I wouldn't be up here. But it's in reference to number 17, and that's dealing with the West Side Youth Facility. And the reason why I'm up here is because I actually watched the SLOSS Committee meeting. And the project manager stated that the land for this project is now 22 acres. It was brought before the community and the subject matter experts said it needs to be 50 acres or more. So my question is, whatever land you're picking, what is being eliminated because of the size? Is the fields, the courts, the building size going to be eliminated? Also, the question is the property. In November, Lanier Sims came to me about a property that's in the wetlands on the Crower Road and Harold Ives. If that is the property that you all are going with, I expressed to him as well from the community concern about the wetlands. And if you remember, Board, we voted that property down, if that is the property, when it was brought to us and was going to be given to us. Commissioner Cowan and Commissioner Henderson, thank you for knowing Newton County, we turned it down 41 vote because of it's in the wetlands and it would have been liability to the county. So my question is, if that is the property, what parameters are going to be put in place for safety? Are there going to be sidewalks? The other thing that I told Mr. Sims was that it's going to be on a busy highway next to the interstate. What are the sidewalks going to be put in place for those who are walking? Also, you all had talked about the truck stop and sex trafficking. You're giving predators easy access to the interstate and the highway to get our kids. So that's the other thing. And so I know Commissioner Long, you said you had a conversation with Ms. Muck. Commissioner, I mean, Intron County Manager Sims spoke to Ms. Muck at the latter part of 2024, and she said that property was still available. She told me that she's been calling him back during that time he was in office and he never would return her calls. So my question is, if that property is not available, what is going to be placed on there? Because the people on Fairview Road definitely do not want more houses because it's almost 20 subdivisions already on that road. So we would like to know what was the conversation that you had with Ms. Muck in regards to that. So my question is, safety in reference to that property, and if it is the wetlands, why would you put children and adults in the wetlands? Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, the public comments will be closed at this time.
Thank you, Chairman Hayes. The next item on the agenda is reports from the chairman, but at this time we have none. So we'll move to item number seven, reports from our Acton County Manager, Mr. James Brown.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I do not have anything to report at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Madam Chair, item number eight, which is unfinished business, we'll move to the consent agenda for approval, items number eight, A, B, and C.
Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. That's unanimous.
Madam Chair, the next item we have is under new business. It's item number nine. We're asking Ms. Brittany White, our Finance Director, to come forward. Finance is seeking approval to enter into the Sandoz opioid settlement. The times... It is time sensitive for September 30th, and there is no cost.
Good evening. Tonight, we are seeking approval to enter into the latest opioid settlement. This one will be... We will be under a subdivision that we are eligible to enter into this, and this is the Sandoz. So this will be probably the fourth or fifth opioid settlement that we'll enter into. Any questions?
No questions from the Board? Is there a motion? Second? Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Madam Chair, and to Ms. Brittany is that, you know, I think that's one of the best things that we ever done when... When the company or companies bring in and they build a whole lot of opioids and stuff and medications and people become addictive, they be subject to a lawsuit. And the people who are hurt and the counters, who had to pay the emergency bills and et cetera, the bills they come from, they should be... Should pay money in order to help. And I just go ahead this on. Also, any other city that, like Ethanol Oxide and Overincurious, they too should be held liable to the damage that they caused to our county and to our citizens. And I think we just have to, because towns are changing, we're going to have to just hold them accountable. Because there's a lot of plants here in Newton who are old plants and subject to law leaks and whatever. And we just cannot just look away. We must... We must hold them accountable. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, the next item we have is item number 10. Our Chief, Rayce Turner of the Newton County Fire Services. Fire Services is requesting Board approval of the Rural Fire Defense, RFD Cooperative Lease Agreement, and Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, between the Georgia Forestry Commission and Newton County Fire Services. There is no cost or match required.
Good morning. Well, sorry. Good evening, Madam Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Newton County Fire Service asks for approval of this agreement with this MOU with the Georgia Forestry Commission. We do have some areas in Newton County that is kind of rural, that traditional fire equipment is not efficient to successfully mitigate some scenes. But we're trying to enter agreement where we can call the Forestry Commission to come in and assist us with heavy load equipment and things that we do not have access to.
Okay. So any questions? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Rayce Turner, where are we... Where are we at as our Fire Services? Where are we at as far as equipment wise? Do we have most of the stuff we need? Do we have some of the stuff we need, or do we need a whole lot of other equipment in order to put our Fire Services where they need to be at?
Well, we do have equipment for a traditional fire service, but we, like I said, we do have some rural areas where heavy equipment is needed. A traditional fire department would not have this type of equipment. Only the Georgia Forestry would have that equipment. We in the process working with the County Manager, trying to incorporate a fleet replacement program because some of our equipment is... Has aged.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. That's unanimous.
Madam Chair, we have our Transportation Director, Mr. Chester Clegg. He's going to present items number 11, 12, and 13. First one is Public Works is requesting the Board to authorize purchase of pipe package from Cherokee Culvert Company. The use is for daily culvert replacements and for emergency culvert failures. It is time sensitive. The cost is $94,321.01. The funding source is P Works General, but it is budgeted and there's no match required. Item number 12, he's requesting that the Board select IMS for completion of the proposed countywide pavement evaluation program. The cost is $97,475. Funding source is P Works General Fund. It is budgeted with no match required. And item number 13 is going to be funded by SLOSS with no match required. And they are requesting the Board to authorize the Chairman to execute a final change order with Summit Construction to close out the Kirkland Road at Jack Neely Road Roundabout Project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item is a purchase of culvert pipe for us to keep on the yard to replace culverts when they wash out. We've gotten kind of low on our inventory, so we're trying to stock back up.
Okay, so that's number 12. Do we have a motion? Second? Oh, I'm sorry. Mine's not numbered like that. Okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, our last meeting, we had quite a bit of discussion on the millage rate and eventual technical tax increase. And Chester, correct me if I'm wrong, and I know Brittany's here too, this is one of the issues, this is where the taxpayers are going to see their dollars at work. I have seen, I know in District One, we have to use this program quite a bit, and these culverts quite a bit. And one or two that have been put in place by our fine county employees. And I just wanted to make note of that because that is... That and paving especially is some places or some areas where our citizens actually get to have tangible evidence of our tax dollars. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. I was thinking about while Commissioners Edwards was speaking. And maybe this is to Ms. Brittany, you know, when you have one budget, there typically be a pile of money that you move over into the next budget. And so I was just kind of wondering how much is that money? If I could ask that question?
With respect to the pipe, the fund that we're using to pay for the pipe?
I'll make my point if...
It's... I think it's, if I'm not mistaken, if I remember right, it's $750,000 in culverts and pipe line item. And we plan to spend all of it this year on pipe and pipe replacements.
Yes, sir. So my question, and I guess, as again I state, is to Ms. Brittany. When you have one budget, like 2016 to 2017, once the budget is in it, there's money that's moved over into the next budget. And so I'll just simply ask how much might that be?
In this particular case, there wasn't any money that was moved over from last year to this?
Yes, sir. I was just... Excuse me. I was just referring to the budget, the entire county budget, not your... Mr. Chester.
Okay, do we have a motion? We have a motion. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Discussion?
Yes, unanimous. Thank you.
We still have discussion. Madam Chair, we still have discussion.
You've got a question?
Yes, ma'am. The question that I asked, and maybe I probably just wasn't clear enough, was that we're going into a new budget, new rate, 8.3. And so when you go into another budget, you cut off the last budget that you have. And typically, the last budget that we had, there's money that's moved over to this... To the next budget. And the question that I asked, and maybe it should be the counsel, how much money has been or is going to be moved over from the prior budget to the new budget?
I think our County Manager can answer that for you.
So to answer your question, Commissioner, is that as of right now, we recently closed off FY '25. And that process is ongoing with the audit. So as of right now, we can't answer that question because the audit is not complete. So we don't know how much available funds is available in FY '25 until that audit is complete.
Correct. And so go back to my point that I was trying to make, is tip that money should be whenever it's added. And I think one estimate that I have was about seven, eight, 10 million, 12 million. And I don't know. I'm not a... You know, I don't keep the numbers for the county. And so I think that money should be used because I think last year when we talked about the prior budget, it was about all the accident that we had had, and there was a reason why we needed to have more fund balance. And so I was just thinking that we shouldn't have quite as much fund balance, that we need to take some of that money and spend on some of the stuff that we need right here in our, you know, in our county. And so hopefully, when it does get the correct number, would you please give it to me? Or do I need to ask for an open record request?
At the conclusion of the audit, I would come back to the Board and give an update at the audit completion of what that number is.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the second item I have is we'd like to complete a countywide pavement evaluation. And I'm proposing to use a company called IMS. They have vehicle and equipment. They do 3D scanning of all the... Of every single paved county road, county-owned road. And it's about 700 plus or minus miles of paved road. And they will... The deliverables will be a rating system that will be downloaded into our GIS as well as on Excel. They'll have it programmed to show us, you know, estimated costs of doing certain repairs to the roads, either rehab or full resurfacing.
Do we have a motion? Second? Okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Long?
Thank you. How often do we do this study? You know, roads is one of the most things that people see their tax dollars going to, and I know I get a lot of calls. And I love that you have this transparent on the website where people can see their road, that it's been already identified. Because I hear all the time, "My road hasn't been done in 25 years," and that I don't know. So I love that it is on there, you can see it. But how often do we do this study? And if we go out and do this study and a road comes up that maybe has deteriorated faster than some of the ones that are in the line, can we make adjustments to get somebody else's road in front if we know that it's in serious problems?
Well, we'll just use it as a guide. So we'll also put our eyeballs on the roads to make sure, you know, that it is the right one to do for that particular program. Yes, we should be doing this evaluation three to five years. I think it's been over six since we've done the last one. So this will be the second time Newton County's done this particular evaluation.
What about dirt roads? I know it's hard for some people to believe that we do have a lot of dirt roads here still in Newton County. They're probably in District One and District Five. But do... You know, I know a lot of times people don't want that changed. They want it to stay the way it is. And we have to buy right of ways and all. It's a little bit more complicated than people think. But do we have any plans to pave or widen or just, you know, cover any of the dirt roads that we have here in Newton County? Have you been getting... I feel like with Newton County changes, you're going to get more requests for these dirt roads to go away.
Well, we are doing... We have been doing some paving. Newton Factory, the Robin Hood Community, we did that several years ago. So we are trying to get those... We would love to have them all paved because the maintenance is very expensive with, you know, $1,000 a load for gravel doesn't go very far. So yes, we do have a program to be systematically, you know, paving our dirt roads.
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Chester, as a Commissioner, I get a lot of phone calls about road pavement. Do the Commissioner have any kind of input on what road or what area?
Certainly. If you get calls from constituents and just let our County Manager know, and he can let me know, and we're going to take a look at it. We'll look at the... We'll make sure it gets evaluated. And we'll... We, you know, we have to... We have a certain budget for each of the annual program. So yes, please let us know if you have one you really want to get done that needs to be resurfaced.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. I didn't plan on going to talk much this evening. I want to kind of be as quiet and wait on maybe to the next meeting. But what about roads straightening? You know, we have had a conversation about Lower River Road and the fact that, I know the residents out that way want it to be straightened. And so how would we go... How would we go about it? Because I had mentioned to you a while back. So how could we go about that, or what do we need to do in order to?
Well, I know there's been some talk from the Solid Waste Authority about doing some, maybe some land swaps and some straightening there near the landfill. So there's some discussions there. And then, of course, you know, straightening the road is a lot more, you know, as you move on down Lower River Road, you either widen the road and straighten it, requires buying right of way, and, you know, it's a little more involved than just the resurfacing. But, you know, we have roads like that, you know, Elks Club Road, Lower River Road, that are kind of curvy and do need some work.
And also, and I'm closing, I also know that, like on Lower River Road, there's been some fatalities there, and also on Elks Club Road. And even though I didn't know, I knew the people, some of the people who passed on Lower River Road, my son knew the young guy who had passed on Elks Club Road. So I think we need to take a good look at it.
So we're doing a safety study here this year, and I'll make sure that they concentrate on those hotspots on those roads and let us know what the recommendations are for improving those and making them safer.
And one last thing, I know that Congressman David Scott's office had been looking into some road straightening by the county. And I was just kind of wondering, what might that be? Would that be the same road?
Straightening a...
A road from Newton County, I think, that is on the list of things they were doing for Newton County. It also was some work to be done and offered. I think a water line had not quite passed, but it was in the, kind of in the pipe work.
Did you say road straightening?
My understanding. Maybe I'll go back and...
If you want to get with James and let him know what it was that you found, please let me know because I'm not familiar with that one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. It's unanimous.
And my last item is the roundabout at Kirkland and Jack Neely. We are closing out that project with the contractor. And there is a contract adjustment we need to make for the quantity, mostly for the quantity of asphalt that was used on the project. The, let's see. The total requested change order is $48,750. And some of it was some sod that we had to add to stabilize the site. Some of it was a little extra concrete to straighten up some people's driveways in the driveway easement that we purchased. But most of it was an adjustment for the quantities of the final topping asphalt.
Do we have a motion? Second? Any discussion? Commissioner Long?
Thank you, Chester. I know that I was out in District Three, and I was in that roundabout a couple of times on Saturday. And I do see the complexity of that roundabout that was out there. And I know that you and I, I asked you questions about what this overage was and if we just kind of missed the ball. And it was definitely unanticipated with the additional items that needed to be done there. And sometimes you can't tell that when you're doing... And also the delay, I think it was a delay on that one. It took a really long time to get that one done. But I think the main thing came down to asphalt, and it came down to that culvert and all those kind of things. So that is pretty complicated out there, I mean, I have to say, whoever engineered that one. So, but I did also want to make a comment that if we could look in the future, I would like to see us not leave the plant material in the middle going forward. I think that's just... I think that's just a, we added eleven thousand dollars to the budget this year, which is just for the roundabouts that we added this year, not counting this one, um, for, for landscaping, maintenance. And then we always plant trees in these things. And what happens, just like here on the square, they plant the trees and what happens? The trees get big roots and tear up the sidewalk, then you got to refix everything. So I just think that other communities that I travel in, um, they are, they're concreteing in the center. I know it's not as beautiful as the trees and landscaping, but I think that we have to, after the budgets hearings that we've gone through, we know that M and O is going to be a big issue going forward in this county. And people don't want to be at a huge millage rate faster than they, faster than they want to be. So thank you for that. I just wanted to bring that up, if we could look at that in the future, um, of, uh, saving some, some dollars. I know some of them don't have landscaping, you know, and I don't know what the engineering is, I'm, that's just your job. But thank you, I appreciate it.
All in favor? Okay. Is that a unanimous vote? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, we're on number fourteen. We're going to ask Ms. Pamela Mas- Maxwell, our Safety and Risk Manager, to come forward. Risk Management is requesting approval to apply for the ACCG Group Self-Inurance Workers Compensation Fund Employee Safety Grant. This program provides financial assistance to ACCG members for reducing employee injuries. It is time-sensitive, um, it needs to be purchased before October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and the maximum would be six thousand dollars.
Thank you. Good evening. The request we have before you is to seek approval to apply for the ACCG Safety Grant. The Board was provided with a copy of the program guidelines, requirements, and procedures. This grant provides financial assistance to ACCG members to assist with the purchase of safety-related equipment, services, and training. We are eligible to apply for six thousand dollars. There's no matching funds that are needed. We have met all the requirements set forth by ACCG to apply. This application must be submitted by August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. The request will be reviewed by committee. Once approved, we will provide copies of paid invoices and ACCG will then send us the safety grant funds. Thank you for your consideration and I'm here to answer any questions if you have some.
Do we have a motion? Second? Okay. Any discussion?
Well, quick, thank you for looking out for these type programs that we can apply for in Newton County. And, uh, we really do appreciate every department head that does this and, um, because it really does help in getting these grants and then getting these programs for the safety programs that we have in Newton County. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. I want you to be our grant writer, the Board of Commissioners' grant writer. The six thousand dollars, is that a, is that a matching grant or just the amount of money that ACCG?
No, they just provide it to us, um, to help out with our safety programs. One of the things that we're hoping to purchase with this six thousand dollars is an AED machine for the Cousins Center as well as some first aid kits.
Amen, okay, thank you.
All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's unanimous.
Madam Chair, we're on items number sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Mr. James Brown, our Acting County Manager, will be presenting on these three along with assistance. The first one is Water Resources. Cornish Creek is requesting Board approval of Garver LLC Professional Services Agreement for Lake Varner's Lakeshore Management Plan Update. This project is a grant, re, excuse me, it's grant reimbursed. Um, it is budgeted. And item number seventeen, the Office of the County Manager, uh, he is discussion and formal approval of the proposed scope of work for the Westside Youth Facility and authorization to engage the services of Ascension Program Management to support the execution and oversight of the project. This is time-sensitive. And then the last item, number eighteen, discussion and formal approval of scope of work for the historic jail renovation. It is time-sensitive. Um, Mr. James Brown will address it, but it is coming from General Fund, uh, not budgeted. Um, there is no match required at this time.
Good, good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So the, uh, Water Resources, uh, grant is a grant that's going to update the Lakeshore Management Plan. We're going to take in community involvement that lives around the lake, um, some input that they have, um, been to close proximity to it. This is a grant reimbursement. Uh, the grant was awarded earlier this year of seventy-five thousand dollars with in-kind service of twenty-five thousand dollars from, uh, as, as far as cash and, and, um, man-hours for this program.
Okay, do we have a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you.
Okay, the next one is the request for, um, discussion from the, for the Board of Commissioners. As we're aware, that the Westside Youth Facility had a grant, has a grant for four million dollars through HUD. We have gone through, uh, commis-, uh, several avenues to get the, the application. Uh, we have several meetings with HUD and, uh, that discussion related back to the project description and the cost. So HUD has asked the, asked for us to give them a detailed project description and a estimated cost for the project in order to move forward with the four million dollar grant.
Okay. Do we have, um, a motion? Commissioner Cooper?
Yeah, I have a motion.
Okay.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Long?
Thank you. I, I'm trying to understand what we're doing here. I mean, I think that we need to look at the, this, some of our projects are, have been quoted a long time ago. They may be outdated. We know we've got all kinds of new costs coming in. Then we're going to have overruns, then we're going to have change orders. Um, you know, a, a ten thousand square foot building that we're going to have to maintain? I mean, I would like to know what that's going to do in the future to our M and O. Um, you know, I, I wasn't here when this all started. Um, when, you know, twenty-five years ago when I was on this board, we had everything centralized at Turner Lake for a reason. Um, I'm concerned that we're going to be building West Side, East Side, North Side, South Side centers and that we're going to have to maintain those at some point. And I know that citizens are, you know, in one breath, everybody's yelling that they don't want to pay any tax dollars. The next breath, hey, we need, we need something to do. I mean, I really think there's a lot more private sectors that will bring things to us. I know at one time we had a Boys and Girls Club that they were trying to donate the land and help us build a building and all that. And I hear from people that they don't like Boys and Girls Clubs or whatever. I don't know anything about them. I, I do plan on visiting one so I can get a better feel for what it is. But I just, a ten thousand square foot building? And then we have a park that's going to be on forty-four acres. I sent you all an email today, uh, late this afternoon, a, a park that I know of that has so much, uh, offered there. And it's on three and a half acres. Um, it's safe, it's secure, it has, uh, nine, uh, pickleball, it has a pavilion, it has a field, it has exercising, it has a playground, it has picnic tables, it has grills, everything. Uh, it's easier to maintain, it's easier to keep going forward. I just don't know how we're going to balance. And the board chooses to do whatever they choose to do, but how are we going to balance all these expenses and projects? And I know we have the splash money, we may, you know, I, I, I kind of feel like we need to go back out to the voters. I know I've mentioned that before and say, here's some splash dollars, do we need to put this to infrastructure? What do we need to do with this money? And I know it's, you know, that, that there's going to be a lot of people mad that I'm saying this, but, you know, our job is to be stewards of the taxpayers' money too. And I know that District Five, I get hit every day about every single expenditure that we make here. And I think we just have to look at, so I don't know tonight, are we voting to, to go forward with the budget we already have? Or are we going to relook at this? That's I guess where I'm getting with this question.
So right now, what we have per HUD, uh, they need, in order for us to move forward, we can't move forward anything as far as that grant until we have an approved description of the project. The application that was submitted, uh, we do not have, uh, HUD doesn't have it. So in order to receive that grant, we have to do, we have to go back to the drawing board of getting a project description and a estimated cost for, a specific estimated cost for the project. So what it, what staff is going to do is take a look at the information that has already been presented to the board, uh, through con, public comments. We also going to utilize the youth commission's, uh, insight when we had, um, had that commissioner, a commission done. So some of their input as well, but also to circle back around with the current board of their input as well, um, for the project. What, one of the things that we're going to do with the help of, uh, Mr. Prime is not only come up with, as stated, the project, the estimated cost, but we also are going to portray that as far as the operational cost piece as well.
Okay, and I, I, that's good because that's what I want to make sure that we're look, relooking at everything again because it's been a couple of years since this has been budget, been put out. Um, and then, you know, look, because we're, I would like for us to try to use land that we already own and not acquire more. We have also a place in Newton County where we have buildings that are not being used, that we could utilize those, uh, save money from that. It's great that we have eight million dollars or four million, I don't even know what the number is because it, it changes all the time. But we got to maintain that. It's wonderful that we have it and everything, but we can't, we have to maintain things. So I just want to, for the future boards and the future citizens here in Newton County, we have to look at those, those dollars and those costs. So I want to make sure that we're very well aware that if we build eight million dollars worth of services, what does that look like in meals going forward? We already know that we raised the budget because of the senior center, which is something we desperately need. I'm not saying we don't need these things, but we have to look at the long-term effects. And I think we've all talked about that before, is long-term effects on these projects. So I would, and we have to incorporate new, new things that, like cameras and everything else in the budgets and not add those after the fact.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think one of the reason, um, for the discussion that we had was the reason why we did parks in different, um, districts was because that was asked by the citizens for us to do. And all the districts had a park, uh, community center, property with the exception of, of District Three. And so there was a, and, and the problem was then, didn't have any money. So the former Commissioner, she went out and worked hard and got with Hank Johnson, um, Congressman Hank Johnson's office. And they said, well, we want to help you. We want to give you some monies to try to make that happen in your community. And during the whole part, we were just sitting there on the island, we were looking at all the prop, properties that was closest to it and want to do it. And one property, my members are right now, you, you, you helped me, Mr. Prime, was that they looked at, or they wanted the community at least. This is what I was told in the meeting that I parti, not participated in, but went to. They said that they want to sue that, uh, property. In fact, they did a petition and that was, that was what they wanted. But we all know that, uh, Commissioners and Chermans and, you know, we're not here forever. It going to move, you're going to move or you're going to leave here. You might leave the county, but you're going to leave here, even myself, I understand that. And so it changed. And so we just, I, I would like to say, and I'm not in District Three, I wasn't appointed, I wasn't elected District Three, I was elected District Four, but I had been a part of the conversation. Just give the people, if it can be done, and I believe that it can, what they asked for. I don't think that's too much. Have discussions in the community with the people so that they can, uh, they'll tell you. I mean, that, that's what we're doing District Four. They'll tell you how they, whether they like it or they disapparent it or what they think. And I think that, uh, we don't, we, we somehow or another, we're getting past that. And, you know, times have changed, you know, since the time you were on the Board, Commissioner Long. And they changed and went to different districts and doing stuff and that. And, um, I just don't, can't understand some of the conversation that we've had. But I just, you know, I just want to treat people right. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just to kind of touch on briefly what Commissioner, um, Long had kind of mentioned. I know years ago, when the Parks and Recreation Plan was probably put in place, it was a lot smaller county. Population may not have been as large. We're growing by leaps and bounds now. And I think it's going to be challenging to have one central location to cover an entire county of over a hundred, uh, twenty, maybe thirty-plus thousand residents. And so I think if you want to get the best use, uh, out of the facilities, uh, you more than likely will have to have multiple. When you look at other counties, um, none of them just have one central, uh, recreational facility for the entire county. Um, it's multiple so that, you know, you don't max out the occupancy, uh, of it. So you have multiple where, you know, you may have some here at this one at this time and some at a different one at a different time. Um, and because we're growing, I think it is, um, becoming a growing, a need, uh, to have multiple facilities. Um, uh, in regards, uh, to that. I, I wanted to ask as well to our county manager, I know you've mentioned about the initial contract on this particular project. Did you hear back from, um, when we would be able to actually see and, uh, obtain the initial contract that was submitted? Did HUD give you that information? Or Congressman Johnson's office, did they give you that information on, are we able to actually see that particular form or application that was originally submitted?
Um, to answer your question shortly, no. So we met with, uh, Congressman Johnson's office, Congressman Scott's office helped, helped facilitate some conversations even up to DC through HUD. Uh, we had two meetings with HUD since our last meeting. Um, and the individual, we got that, uh, our project manager's manager involved to try to find out where the original contract is. And we was unable to obtain that original contract. Therefore, the request from HUD was to go back to the drawing board and come up with a project description and estimated cost.
Okay. So, and, and I'm fine with that, but I would like to, you know, if we're going to approve this, um, I would love to approve it with the condition that we receive that contract. Um, I think it is needed. Uh, this board needs to be able to see, uh, the original contract that was submitted. We need to know what was on it. Uh, and so, uh, if we are going to move forward with this project, uh, I'm going to propose, um, that we do see that initial form or that initial contract that was submitted, uh, originally without the authorization of this particular board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, for clarification on that motion.
Well, the motion on the table is a motion to approve.
We had a motion to approve.
Yes, and nobody has made an amended motion.
Right.
Okay, and then we had a second, right? Okay, all in favor?
So...
Did you?
So we did have a motion and a second. And so what I'm asking, just to amend...
To amend the motion?
That motion. So with the emotion to approve, that we ensure that we're able to obtain the original, uh, contract or form that was submitted.
And you're making that in a formal amended motion?
Yes, ma'am, a formal amended motion.
Is there a second on the amended motion?
Uh, my question is, is this, I think it was, it was listed on the agenda as a discussion. And so I guess in order to get, and help me if I'm wrong, I'm not the turn, I'm just the old commissioner sitting up here. I think in order to make a motion, you have to somehow or another amend the agenda and add it to the agenda as an item. So to be, so to be clear, I mean, I don't think we just can come out and say, well, we got a discussion, we're going to approve discussion, but you got to add an agenda item, I think.
Commissioner?
If I'm wrong.
This says discussion and formal approval, so this board can make a motion on this item.
Okay, so we have the amended motion. And we have a second.
We don't have a second on the amended.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Edwards, and we have a discussion. Commissioner Walton.
I, I want to make sure we're following procedure. If he made the motion and somebody made the second, doesn't he have to amend his, his motion? Or do we just vote his motion and then, then vote for another motion?
So what we'll do at this point, there's an amended motion and an amended second, is that correct? We'll open it up for discussion on the amended motion. After the discussion is over, we'll vote on the amended motion. If it passes, then that's done.
Okay, just want to make sure we're doing it correctly.
The amended motion is to move to approve the office of the county manager, discussion and formal approval of the proposed scope of work for the Westside Youth Facility and authorization to engage the services of Ascension Program Management to support the execution and oversight of the project with obtaining the original contract or form that was submitted for this project.
Okay, so we have amended motion, you made the second. Discussion. Commissioner Cooper.
So, I make sure I'm clear. So you changing, changing my motion and adding those stipulations.
That's it.
On that, okay.
Okay. All in favor? Oppose? Okay, motion passes. Mr. Brown.
So the, this discussion is about the historic jail. Currently with the redesign of the top floor, the second floor in the historic jail to keep the cells in place and do refurbishing, the presented budget is one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars, a change order. Primarily that is for redesign of that second floor and cost escalation for the overall project. Mr. Prime has the new layout to present to the board.
Good evening. So earlier this year, when you guys requested that we go back and do a deeper assessment of the existing cells that were on the second floor, we went back with our design team, did an assessment of those and determined that we could refurbish them, they are in need of having some lead-based paint removed off of them, but they're in decent, good enough shape that basically they are eligible for us to do that. We also had to look at some structural requirements and structural modifications in the building that have occurred over the last six months as well. The building, unfortunately, the building's been sitting idle for a very long time and with no air conditioning and whatever, so it just continues to deteriorate. And so we've actually found that there were some windows and some areas that have been starting to crack. So, so part of this, this cost is to, one, go in and make sure that the second floor is historically accurately refurbished. The price includes twenty-five thousand dollars for exebitry so that we can continue to tell the history of not only the facility, but of Newton Six and others that were part of that group that was there. And it also maintains the fact that we had to go back out for bid for all of our elements because the pricing had, had basically gone stale and escalation hit us as well. So the, that's where the, the challenge and the added cost came from. The project had already been through the review process, the permit process with the city, both for building permit and also for historic. So we're, all we need tonight is approval from you to move forward with the amended GMP, and then we can start moving forward with the project.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
No.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Henderson, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I, I just want to say that, you know, I've had the, the honor of, of over the years standing up for the history of, of, of poor Afro-American people, especially some of the people who landed up in that jail, including some of my Ken folks and, and or others. And I know we had had a discussion prior to, to representative coming down and talking to us about it. And I think I had mentioned to us, prior to Tyrone Brooks, Representative Tyrone Brooks, I think he's a former representative, I'm not sure, probably might be still a representative coming down, and what we talked about was the same thing, that him and some lady came in and said, wait, we need to preserve the historic jail because of the history that it lends to Newton County. And, you know, and I asked, well, the same thing that I was talking about, because I was understood, and as an adolescent, I would pass by the jailhouse when we had to walk from school, Newton. And I would hear the peoples in the jail say, hey, give me, send me some money, throw me some chungum, tell, tell so-and-so, come and see me. And so, you know, I, I wasn't a part of the history of the one who went to jail, but I knew of that history. And then some of those stories came and said that, you know, that the last place that you looked at was over here, at the room back behind me, when they hung it, and I don't know whether they hung anybody in there or not, but those were some of, of the rumors. And the Newton Six, I remember, not all of them, but I remember Joe Lightfoot and, and or others should be recognizing them. I remember Ms. Kathleen Williams, one of the women, when they took all them students who was defiant and wanted equal rights, civil rights. And they put them in jail and they stayed there for a long time. And I can remember as a child, and I'm closing y'all, as a child, when they said, here comes Junior Odom, shoot, boy, I'd start running home, I'd run over somebody, you know, because we believed that Junior Mr. Odom would do something to you. But it's, it's the historic value is, is for us where we came from, and this is where we are now. In order to know where you're going, you got to know where we came from. You can't just hide it, change it, move it around. You got to know what happened and hope and pray nothing happens again in our community. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, so all in favor? I'm sorry.
I'm looking at your budget analysis that you have here, and it looks like, did we have a budget amendment already of four hundred thousand for this project at some point?
Yes, ma'am.
What was that, when was that, and what was that?
So basically, when the project was initialized into the first GMP, we then had to do budget amendments to, to basically adjust it up to have enough money to do, to do the project at that point.
So, so four hundred thousand, and then we're adjusting again for another hundred and thirty-seven thousand, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, and, you know, our breakout at a hundred and thirty-seven, did we not want to look at this and, and analyze it, or me, or is it just me saying that? I mean, I have a problem with us taking a hundred and thirty-seven thousand out of the general fund for this when it's not budgeted. I mean, I know we need to finish that jail, but maybe we have to go back and say, preserve what we need to preserve, and, you know, I mean, I, I don't know the solution, but just, I, I don't want to keep taking money after money that we all have budgeted for different projects. I, I don't know the answer, so somebody tell me the answer.
So the goal is what we're going to do with staff and the help of Mr. Prime is to go through the whole process, construction, and try to save as much money as we can. We do have some contingencies that we hope to avoid, to use, and that could possibly bring that, the overall cost down to around fifty. But as it stands right now, until we actually get into the project, that's where it stands right now as the ceiling level of what the project would cost. But there is still opportunity through construction to, to save some funds.
I guess we have not been provided the detail of what this hundred and thirty-seven is. I know we're standing up here and we're saying it goes for this, and this, and this, and this. Is that not something that we would do for us to just look and say, can we, can we make adjustments anywhere? I see we have a contingency of twenty-five thousand. We have some contract adjustments over here, so we do have some savings to the side, but, you know, I know it sounds like peanuts to some people, but it's not when we're spending other people's money, and I know you know that, and I'm not getting on to you for that for, it's not your, it's not your fault, okay? But I just have a hard time, you know, for me, voting for something that I don't really know exactly what this hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars is.
Okay, so the, the, if you look at the, the previous guarantee, look at the cost adjustments, the previous GMP was one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred ninety-eight, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and then the current one is one million, three hundred and fifty. So a hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars is additional cost due to escalation and the structural modifications and fixes that we're going to have to do to the building that we weren't aware of nine months ago when we set the original GMP. The project, those, those cracks and those problems had not occurred at that point. And then the twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars is made up with adding monies into a project contingency, as to what Mr. Brown said, it's just a contingency. It's an old building, we don't know what we're going to find until we get into it, but we know that with that money, plus with contingencies we got, we got into the GMP, we can cover all that and make sure we get the project done. The team is dedicated to making sure that if we have to make adjustments, that can make sure we stay within budget, that we're going to do that. It's just an old building, and so you don't know what you don't know until you get into it and start opening things up.
So there's more cracks in that building in nine months? So we might want to dig in deeper to that one, so, because that's concerning if nine months.
Well, we, we actually brought the structural engineer in, did a complete structural assessment of the building. So we, we feel like we've got it, that this will get it fixed and get stabilized if we can get in there and get it done.
Leave it in open to air and heat and cold.
Right. The interesting thing is, that second floor, when they, when they added those cells, whatever, years ago, and added all that concrete, they didn't add additional structural support for that. And so over the years, it had, and without any kind of conditioning or, or maintenance, it has just continued to deteriorate. So it's kind of behooves us to get in there and get this taken care of and at least get the building stabilized so that we know that we doesn't have any further problems with it and get worse.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. I understand it's a little more money than, than, you know, than we probably want to spend to fix it, but I can't remember, and then somebody helped me if I'm thinking kind of wrong or fruit-gazing, is that the meeting that we had over at the courthouse, the new courthouse, where it's with the fire department, and we gave a blank check for an investigation that we don't know what it's going to cost. And nobody even reported, at least not to me, about what it costs. And so the few dollars that we can spend on this is, is not very much. And I'm going to close this with this, if you can spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on J.C. Henderson, two, three rolls of toilet paper and some broccoli, so I think what we're talking about is pennies. Thank you.
Okay. Do you? All in favor? Oppose? Okay, the motion is approved. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're on item number nineteen with, which is alcohol beverage license. It's the first reading for TNNK Enterprises, Inc., DBA Quick Stop, eleven two thirty, Highway Thirty-Suite C, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one four. The licensee is New Raleigh, Panjwani, District Five.
I do have the papers in front of me, and we have no violations on this store, so I do make a motion to approve.
Wait on it.
Oh, first reading. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, first reading.
First reading.
We have one more that is also a first reading for Flash Foods, two seven four, five one two seven, DBA Circle Case Store, Inc., five one two seven, forty-one seventy-five, Salem Road, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six. The licensee is Mary Brown, and this is for District Three.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, we're also at item number twenty. This is the open forum for citizen comments. Each person will be allotted three minutes to come forward. Please speak clearly into the mic. Please provide your first and last name and address for the record.
Good evening, board. My name is Maya Allen Neely, resident of District Three. Up here, of course, to talk about the Westside Youth Facility. The narrative that you all try to perpetuate every time we have this topic is, 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 is amazing to me. And we have a commissioner sitting here for District Three that's supposed to represent us, and you speak about roads. We need to know what's going to happen to the Westside Youth Facility. You speak as if this was in the past. March twenty-fourth, or March twenty-twenty-four, last year, there was a meeting, and Covington News printed an article, master plan calls for Newton Park upgrades, new Westside facility. We paid people to tell us where to put it and why. District Three is the most populated, the most dense, and we pay the most taxes. We don't want an old building remade. Spring Hill has a new park, it's over sixty acres, okay? In the article, it also stated, this is the people that we paid, that the park should be located within the Fairview Estates neighborhood. The Westside Community Park to hit some of the high-density population. We see this as a pressing need, something that should be addressed in the near future, said Saint Pierre. The plan recommends that it includes a new community center, four tennis courts, a splash pad, four outdoor basketball courts, two multipurpose fields, and a new playground. We have the property, first it was, we didn't know if we had the money. Now you want to make sure the i's are dotted, t's are crossed. David Scott's office, Hank Johnson's office, would not have been talking to this man here if it was not valid.
Elena Sanders, I actually had something else to talk about, but since you all had discussion on the Westside Youth Facility, I had to speak on it. First, I do want to thank you, Commissioner Mason, for actually explaining why we do need this in various areas. District Three is the only area that does not have the parks and recreation, but I wanted to, it probably needs to go to the county attorney, because that motion was based on a contract, not an application. There is no contract, nor have I signed a contract, nor have I signed an application. So we're beating a dead horse here, and that's why you're not getting information? Because I signed nothing. That's been the rumors going around, that I signed Chairman Marcello Bane's name. I signed nothing. The application only required for you to put the description of the building, which came from SLOST. So you guys are beating a dead horse. There is no contract. They don't give you a contract when you submit a grant, you get a grant agreement. Please know the terminology, because that motion is wrong. And then the motion also state whether we move forward with the Westside Youth Facility, that was voted on by the people. So it's already approved by the people of Newton County for SLOST to collect their one penny, so it has to be built. So we want to make sure that we do that. In reference to how it's going to pay for itself, and I know you wasn't here, Commissioner Long, but I paid out of my pocket for an architect to design the building. And inside that building, it says how it's going to pay for itself. That's what MBAs do, that's how we think. We think of how we're going to get a return on our investment, and inside of that, it shows you how you're going to get a return on your investment, because commercial is built inside the building. That's how you pay for your operations. So you may want to get someone in operations to actually go over that. And also in regards to the Boys and Girls Club, that didn't come from Elena Sanders, that didn't come from me at all. That came from the students, the youth, who said it was boring. That, that facility was there, and That facility was there, and it was across the street from a major subdivision, and they didn't even go to it. It is cookie cutter. The Boys and Girls Club is the richest nonprofit organization in the world. They make multi-billion dollars. We have a lot of nonprofits in Newton County that deal with youth that can manage and maintain this building like they do in Douglas County. They have all the nonprofits that provide services to their youth inside their youth facility. So, why would you want to go with something that the people don't want? It had nothing to do with me, I have nothing against the Boys and Girls Club. The people didn't want it. Also, yes, land was given to them in the beginning when I first came in. It wasn't feasible, because it was in the wetlands, and that's why we're here now. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Thersia Hodge. I'm a fifteen-year resident of Newton County. In regards to the forming another grant, I've been up here talking about before, so I'm kind of confused when it says there's no contract. But of course, there's no contract, because we are still in the pre-award process. You get a contract when you submit the documentation for the contract to be executed. What Newton County received was a grant award package on May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. It was the award letter, there was the Form Assistance Award Amendment, and also the grant agreement, which is incomplete, not executed. So, of course, you're not going to get a contract agreement. And in order to sustain services in the county, you could apply for a lot of federal grants through grants.gov to sustain the services in the county and not tax the taxpayers. Now, I think, I live off of Harold Dobbs Road. The intersection of Harold Dobbs and Crow Road eventually going to need a traffic light, because Dobbs Landing is coming, and when you try to get on that intersection, I know they revamped it, but if you're in a smaller vehicle and a bigger vehicle is coming your way, you cannot see the two cars that's heading north, so therefore, there's plenty of accidents that happen right there. So, I just need for y'all to think about revamping that area, Harold Dobbs and Crow Road. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jean Cartlich. I live at two-eight-five-two Club Forest Drive in the Fieldstone Estates in District Three. I'm not here to talk about the youth facility. I am a resident and a homeowner in Fieldstone Estates, Newton County, District Three, and I'm a member of the Board of the Fieldstone Community Association. And so, I'm here tonight to discuss issues pertaining to both code enforcement and safety. It's my understanding that Newton County has adopted the ICEC's code for code enforcement and other things, and in Section Ten, dash-nine-one, it outlines sanitation requirements. Paragraph four is of care of the premises that outline the provisions. Several homeowners have expressed to me, because I used to be the president forever, and they think I still am, that they have gone and made their complaints, and nothing is happening, nothing. I myself visited both code enforcement and the sheriff's office. The personnel I spoke to were, at each location, were very understanding and, you know, noticed what I was saying, but there's been no improvements. The resident homeowners are requesting the county commissioners to hear our plea for law enforcement to come into our subdivision and enforce the rules and regulations and laws that are in place and to protect and serve us. Statistics show that Fieldstone Estates, per Sheriff Ezele Brown, we are the oasis of the area. We have very low crime up until now. And because Salem Road is being revamped, we are a cut-through from Fairview Road to Flatshells Road. Our Rockdale Commissioners put in speed humps. We petitioned Newton County on multiple locations, we couldn't get it done. So, we're asking for help. We have car businesses, we have rental rooms by LLCs, we have traffic that parks in the street, and school buses have almost had head-on collisions. Why can't we enforce the rules and the laws that are in place now before someone is injured or killed? We have no sidewalks for these children to walk on, they're standing on the corner, and it's going to be dark before long in the mornings for those children to stand there with cars dodging, cars that are parked on a two-lane street, making it a one-way location.
I'm sorry, time's up. Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Well, at this time, we'll close the comments.
Madam Chair, the last item we have right now is for item number twenty-one, which is the Board Comments, and we'll start with District One, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, only have one. District cleanup time has come around again. Two years ago, we focused on the southern part of District One. Last year, we went on eighty-one, broke the law and picked up trash on eighty-one as part of our cleanup effort, and this year, it'll come, we're going to move it back to the east side of the county for the first time this year. So, on September sixth, at nine o'clock a.m. in Mansfield, we'll keep Newton Beautiful, we'll have their dumpster and their trash, the bags and little trash picker-uppers, and we'll get together for a couple hours and pick up trash in that part of the county this time. So, if anybody that can come out, they're welcome to join us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
I have no comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to thank everybody who came out to my birthday party over in Town Square at the motel.
Commissioner Henderson, that's not our agenda.
Oh, yes, sir, sir. I'm sorry. Well, I just want to say this. August, that's fine, thank you. August the twenty-eighth, can I talk about, can I talk about the town hall meeting that I'm having?
What did you say?
Town hall meeting that I had at Spring Hill Park, Spring Hill Community Center. I was twenty-eighth at six o'clock p.m. having a town hall meeting. Anyone, everyone who wants to come, and question myself, and I've asked the county manager, maybe we have representatives from Congressman David Scott's office, and talk about what he's doing to help Newton County as far as grants and stuff, and just we were talking about a little bit about the road. There was something I was looking at, and I'll get it clarified, that about a road straightening out or something. But anyway, you're welcome to come, we're going to talk about taxes, and if we can't go out and try to help our seniors, if we can't go out and don't hear them, then who can we help? If we can't go out and make sure that our kids have a safe space in their community, then what can we do? That's what we've been doing. It's not like Newton County Board of Commissioners is broke. We are not broke, may act like we're broke, because it just seems like in certain parts of the community, you can have evil stuff. In other parts of the community, you can have little to nothing. And we just want, what I would like to see is to slice the pie for everybody. I think that's what God wants to do, and that's what we're going to do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
At this time, Madam Chair, you can call for an adjournment.
Okay, I know Commissioner Henderson appreciated his birthday party, and happy belated birthday. Good, we're glad. Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Second?
Second?
Okay, all in favor? We are adjourned.